Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council, April 4th, 2023. I am calling this meeting to order. And notice of option to recess into executive session. Notice is hereby given to the members of the City Council and to the general public that at this regular meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item on the following agenda. City Clerk, can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Aslan?
Present.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would. Please stand if you're able.
Vice Mayor, would you read our mission statement?
Madam Mayor, the mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
I'm having some technical, really not technical difficulties, it's more my difficulties. I'd like to read our land acknowledgement. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home. All right, moving on to item number 4A, approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do councilmembers have any questions or comments on the minutes? I will take a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes as written for March 1st, 22, March 15th, 22, February 28th of 23, and regular meeting of March 7th, 23.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. Before we move into public participation, something that I forgot to mention is that item number... Which one was it, Stacy?
Mayor, it's going to be item 12B.
B. Okay, item number 12B is going to be rescheduled for a future meeting because our staff member is out ill. So that will not, we will not be discussing that tonight. And now I will open it up to public participation. First up, we have Rose Tohe.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this time. Also, my name is Rose Tohe. I am the coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives here at the City of Flagstaff. First, I want to thank you for selecting and seating two new commissioners for the Indigenous Commission. And we're really blessed with having a lot of applicants the past two years. Last year, I think we had 11 applicants. This year, we had nine, and so we're pretty proud of that. Second, I also want to say that I nominated two individuals from our commission who were recognized as Volunteers of the Year at the Viola Awards. I was really happy about that. The remainder of the time, I want to also let you know that through the Coconino County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, we have an Indigenous Initiatives Committee that we are going to have listening circles next week, and I emailed that flyer to you. So I want you all to know that this is directly related to the recommendation City Council accepted a couple of years ago, and this would be under wellness as well as public safety in criminal justice. So since this is a collaborative effort between the city and Coconino County, it really is valuable that we are doing these. So under this, we will be meeting here in Flagstaff, Tubus City, and Page, doing these circles with people who have been justice-involved at every level, from police to probation within the court system, everything, so that we can get their input as to how their experience have been and what they feel the gaps are, what the good things are within the system. And so these are some things that are very needed under our Indigenous Initiatives Committee action plan. So I wanted just to let you know about that. And I hope that we're going to be traveling, and I hope that everything will be... We'll do a report, and we'll be reporting back to CJCC at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Richard Holson?
Thank you, Councilmembers, for having me up here. I just want to report on an irritating problem I'm experiencing as a biker, and I bike about 300 days a year at least. When the trash containers are put out on the sidewalk, that's fine, but when they put them in the bike paths, it's kind of dangerous for people like me riding, and traffic's gone by, you know, pretty fast. So I called, if you don't mind, I called Madison, Wisconsin, Berkeley, California, and Tucson, the people. I said, "Do you have any problems like this?" Because they're all biking communities. They do not. So is there any way we can not put the containers in the bike paths, but have them put them on the sidewalks instead? It would be much safer for everybody. And that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And something I should have mentioned earlier is that during public participation, council is not allowed to ask questions or interact with the speakers. So I apologize that we all sat here and stared at you.
Everybody else does, so don't worry.
All right, Mike Pappas?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Actually, this is kind of a... No, it's not kind of, it's shocking, okay? I can promise everybody in this room, I'm the book on the NAPDA Public Bus Agency here, okay? I'm just going to read what I wrote now, okay? I know we're short on time, because I have a 35-hour story on them, okay? All right. "I'd like to bring a serious matter to the councils and the public's attention regarding the Flagstaff NAPDA Public Bus Agency here. NAPDA's employees and officials have been intentionally abusing our public here for some time now. I also have the evidence that NAPDA is a legitimate public safety concern. I have personally dealt with NAPDA CEO Heather Delmolen and NAPDA Safety Manager, farthest thing from the truth, okay, Sam Short, and I can assure everyone that they both have no regard for human lives, along with their intentional acts against humanity that I've experienced personally, okay? And I have the evidence of that, too, okay? I have also now received over two full years in total unlawful bus riding suspensions issued by NAPDA's manager Sam Short, as Short continues to issue these unlawful riding suspensions to countless others also." Okay. "These unlawful suspensions issued by NAPDA's manager Sam Short are also arrestable federal law violations by Short under Title 18 U.S. Code 242 regarding deprivation of rights, literally a felony. Leaving out my personal library of NAPDA's employees' misconduct, as time is short here, I will just reiterate once again that NAPDA has been literally and intentionally running a mobster act on our public here, and the matter has got to be addressed. Without direct supervision over NAPDA, their misconduct will continue. NAPDA has been even restricted the public from posting on NAPDA's government page for obvious reasons." Because, for obvious reasons, okay? Which is also another NAPDA federal law violation. A NAPDA CEO, Delmolen, and NAPDA Short need to be removed. Thank you. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Stevenson?
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jill Stevenson. I moved here from the Midwest a year and a half ago, and I was initially very impressed with the bicycle lanes, because we did not have those back in our little towns. But as bicycles become a more important mode of transportation in our push towards carbon neutrality, we need to have safer ways for bicyclists to travel. What about more lanes like those along Beaver Street north of downtown? Very obvious curb bumps with occasional posts separate the bicycle lanes from traffic. Wouldn't this be feasible on more roads? If not a raised border, more clearly marked lines that don't suddenly narrow to nothing would also help. How are bicyclists expected to handle intersections? How can bicyclists navigate in the winter when their lanes are piled high with snow? Maybe snow removal is necessary on high-traffic roads. Would it help to have a committee of volunteer citizens working with city staff to come up with innovative and practical solutions to these problems? I know there are many folks who are available and willing to participate in this. Please give serious consideration to bicyclists' concerns and needs. This has to be part of your plan towards carbon net zero by 2030. Thank you."
Thank you. Dapper Dre.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Good to see everybody. We start the meeting with "protect and enhance the quality of life for all." We also are looking at screens that say "on the path to carbon neutrality." We see the words, we say them, I hope we can start practicing them. Pedestrian and bike infrastructure is pretty good for everyone. When everybody gets out of a car, hopefully, they can be pedestrians. We're also hold into the needs of our less fortunate folks who can't walk, who do need wheelchairs or other assistance devices, more extreme than even mine, to get around this town, a town that we love, a town that we try to engage with as much as we possibly can. And we just got to get away from always only giving that opportunity to people with cars. We just have to. If you want to put density into Flagstaff, it's going to have to be multimodal. You have that amount of people, just by percentages, more people are going to need different ways to get around. And are you joking that anybody could have gotten around on a wheelchair in the last three months in downtown Flagstaff or pretty much anywhere? No way. There's just no way. So whatever that takes, whatever that looks like, capital projects are coming up. I know we can start that process, and I guarantee you, pedestrians and cyclists are only asking for like 10, 20 miles of infrastructure to the 700 miles of car-paved road that only really gets to be fully used by motor vehicles. That's who gets to benefit from it. That's, the pedestrian and the cyclist is just one little afterthought. And so I do ask staff, and I do ask council, to always just think about that little bit, about how much that changes for the myriad of different abilities and capabilities and engagement points of citizens in our town. I am one person, but everybody knows, everybody here knows how much I try to do, and I do that on two feet, well, one leg now, but two feet walking around, and I'll be back on two wheels trying to do my best every time. And I guarantee you, me alone probably, or at least the organizations that I volunteer my time to and engage with, have brought in millions of dollars in taxes to this town, and people on their armchairs typing about how nothing can stop that accident that happened at Beaver and Butler. Well, I'll tell you what, if streets in general were just a little bit safer for everyone, not just faster for cars, when you make improvements for pedestrians and cyclists, that helps us. We are vulnerable. We are the most vulnerable users, and when accidents happen to us, we die, we lose limbs. We have to use our health insurance, not our car insurance. So please, 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 think about other people than just the people who have to spend 30 minutes in their cars.
Thank you. Scott Heinches?
Hello, thank you very much for having us. I just wanted to say a few things about what a few previous people said about bicycle infrastructure and bike lanes especially, with the trash cans this winter, one thing. But I'm here to comment today on the need to allocate funds as part of the upcoming budget decisions. It's related to pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. The city has made modest strides these past few years to improve this infrastructure, but now is the time to act on a few key projects. The more money the city spends on roadwork and expansion, the more it should be spending on safe bicycle and pedestrian projects. I urge you to provide funding for protected intersections, elevated bike lanes on Butler, and more city positions made available to help rapidly implement these needs, as well as truly acting on an interconnected and holistic bicycle system throughout Flagstaff. The more we accommodate car culture in this town without establishing proper and safe pedestrian passage, the worse traffic congestion will get, and the more we will isolate those who cannot or choose not to drive. I believe that we all want to feel safe walking and riding bikes here, so let's take a few simple measures to mature that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Shimoni?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, leadership, staff, and members of the public. Good to be here with you all. Just want to say a couple of things. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Flagstaff Biking Organization, a group of which has about 2,500 members, and I had the opportunity this past week to attend the Arizona Bicycle Summit in Phoenix, hosted by the Coalition of Arizona Bicyclists. And I got to drive around Phoenix quite a bit, and it is pretty eye-opening. I mean, I'm sure we've all gotten the opportunity to do so, but five, seven-lane corridors, 40, 50 miles an hour, with low bike lanes, right? But it's not a bike-ped-friendly area at all, and I'm afraid that the direction that the city might be heading in might be trying to emulate what we see in Phoenix, which is just not good for any community, I would argue. And so it was pretty eye-opening being there for the summit while also driving around. I also learned about a neighborhood in Tempe that is being designed currently that just released application opportunities that is all walkable, no parking for cars, and they're already sold out, is what I'm being told. So there is a demand for walkable communities, and with your upcoming budget retreat this Friday on capital projects, I'm really hoping that you all help the city's staff and work with leadership to prioritize funds to go towards making Flagstaff more walkable and bikable, of which we aren't today. So on behalf of FBO, Flagstaff Biking Organization, we would like to support, put, voice our support for the three projects that you all have learned about. It's a total of $3.6 million, not a lot when you talk about capital projects, and they really do move Flagstaff forward in regards to making it more walkable and bikable. As the city continues to grow and invest hundreds of millions of dollars into new roadways and widening projects, we really do hope that the city continues to also prioritize more bike-ped-focused projects, again, a fraction of the cost. 419 funds are limited within the bike-ped category. Their budget is about $29 million, and it's caught up in things like signage, markings, things I would argue that the city should be doing without those funds, but yet the funds are being allocated for that. So often, when council will ask for more bike-ped projects, and staff says, "Where's the funding coming from?", they point to the bike-ped pot of money, which is just too limited. The greater 419 pot of money is available to these types of projects, and with the Viola University alignment, it's gone from $9 million of additional 419 funding to 12, and now to $13 million. So whatever tree of money we're pulling from there, that might be a good place to look. And lastly, I hear that Martin's team is being built, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Stefan Sommer?
Hello, Mayor and City Council, city staff, citizens of Flagstaff. My name is Stefan Sommer. I've lived in town about 20 years. I'm with the Northern Arizona Climate Change Alliance, and I'm also here to urge you all to put the dollars towards bike safety. Carbon neutrality really is the city's goal, and I lodge you all for declaring a climate emergency in 2020. It really is an emergency, a global emergency in every way, and an emergency for our community in terms of fires and flooding and intense monsoon downpours, et cetera. So we need to reduce our footprint. About 30% of our carbon footprint here in town is from combustion vehicle transportation. We need to allow the infrastructure that will support a shift in our culture away from combustion vehicles to include more walking and more biking. Currently, our bike lanes could be much better designed. They've been a problem, not just this winter, but in general. If we lift those bike lanes to the sidewalk level, it's guaranteed that the interaction between bicycles and pedestrians, although there can be problems there, too, but it's never as bad as the problems you have when bicycles are physically interacting with combustion vehicles. So I urge you guys to put the money towards those three projects that will help to improve biking safety and allow a more, a larger culture of shifting away from our combustion vehicles. Thank you all.
Thank you. And we have at least one online comment, and I don't have any additional physical comment cards.
Mayor, it looks like the commenter left the chart.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our proclamations and recognitions. Okay, first... First up, we have the Coconino Coalition for Children and Youth, and I believe that they are online. Do we have anyone here in person? Oh, please, join us down here. Hello? Great, thank you. All right, whereas April was first declared Child Abuse Prevention Month by Presidential Proclamation in 1983, since then, April has been a time to acknowledge the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse. And every child is intended, is entitled to be free from sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect. And child maltreatment is a complex and ongoing problem in our communities affecting many children, and community action is needed to educate and support families, to strengthen their lives and our city. And the City of Flagstaff is fortunate to have individuals and organizations dedicated to supporting programs that foster the prevention of child abuse and participate in the healing of those who have suffered abuse and neglect. And our commitment to community awareness and education will inspire hope and break the cycle of violence and abuse. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. All right. And let's... Virginia, I understand that you are online. Would you like to make some comments? Virginia, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. We could take the photo while we're waiting for Virginia to plug in here, okay?
Hi. I'm hoping you all can hear me. Thank you so much for recognizing child abuse prevention.
Yes, please go ahead.
And City Council for your support in strengthening our communities. And I would just like to note during this month, we're trying to raise awareness. On our website, coconinokids.org, we have a whole series of webinars that are available around trauma-informed prevention and resiliency. So thank you, everyone, for helping us strengthen our communities and our children. Have a good day.
Thank you, Virginia. Are you wanting to announce publicly about the grant? But you don't have to.
No, I'd love to. I wanted to get that permission from you. Yes, we were just awarded as one of four agencies in the state of Arizona with a grant for trauma-informed initiatives here in Coconino County. So we will be working with both the City of Flagstaff and Coconino County to help create trauma-informed and resiliency initiatives and policy and system change here. So we're very excited and very thankful to all of our partners, including those board members you see there in the live audience, as well as many of our partners across the community. So thank you, it's very exciting.
Thank you, Virginia. And now I would like to ask... Oh, thank you. Vice Mayor Austin Aslan is going to read a proclamation.
Wonderful, Mayor, thank you. As the Chair of the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council, it's an honor and a privilege to read this proclamation regarding our Water Services Department. If you guys want to come on down and fill in some space here, come take your spot in the spotlight and shine. That includes you, our new director. Come on. I'll get started on reading this as folks fill in here. You know the drill, tell them what to do. Whereas the state of Arizona declared April as Water Awareness Month in Executive Order 2008-19, and whereas the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, Arizona... 2008-19, and whereas the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, Arizona, continues to explore ways to optimize efficient water use through municipal initiatives such as non-revenue water auditing, rebate programs for commercial and residential customers, and high-efficiency fixture provisioning, and whereas, Flagstaff water customers can take action to reduce their water consumption through the replacement of conventional fixtures with WaterSense-certified fixtures, and by lowering shower consumption by replacing showerheads, pausing flow during lathering, or by using a shower timer, and whereas, outdoor water consumption and approximately 24% of potable water consumption in Flagstaff and customers can reduce their outdoor use through water-efficient landscaping practices such as low-water landscape conversions and irrigation assessments for lawns, and whereas, water conservation is an integral part of saving energy, which contributes to lowering carbon emissions and helping the City of Flagstaff meet the goals of the Carbon Neutrality Plan. And whereas, from April 1st through 30th, 2023, the City of Flagstaff wishes to inspire its residents, students, and neighboring communities to participate in the Wailand National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation by making a series of online pledges at mywaterpledge.com to reduce their impact on environment and to see immediate savings in their water and energy bills. Now, oh, there you are.
Now therefore I, Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Water Awareness Month and the celebration of the Wailand National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. Does one of you want to say something?
Yes, I will. Hello, everyone. Happy April and Happy Water Awareness Month. We are doing a lot of really fun things for the public this month. We have a ton of events. We'll be at First Friday, we're also offering tours of the Lake Mary Water Treatment Plant. If you would like to do that, this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., just RSVP to us at savewater@flagstaffaz.gov. We'll also be doing a couple informative talks. We are going to be at a ton of the other community events as well, like Earth Day and Full Steam Ahead, and all of that info is at flagstaff.ac.gov/wam, for Water Awareness Month. And you also may have heard them mention that we're also competing again in the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. So we need everyone to go to mywaterpledge.com and take the pledge. We compete against other cities. Mayor Daggett is, she's gunning to win and we would love to do that again, so please go and take the pledge. There are also opportunities to do that at any of our events that you show up to, so we look forward to seeing any of the public and any of the council at those, and I'll make sure that Sean Johnson gets the full list of events to you guys. Thanks so much.
Okay, Jolene, I understand that Jolene from the Exchange Club is here in person. Yes, welcome. Whereas, all young children deserve quality early learning environments that support them as lifelong learners, and nurturing parenting and quality accessible childcare programs are essential to children's development during the critical years from birth to age five, and investments in babies and young children have profound impacts on building thriving, vibrant communities. And first things first, Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children, Southern Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children, and other community organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 52nd anniversary of the Week of the Young Child. And these organizations are working to improve equitable early learning opportunities that provide a strong start for children in Flagstaff, and early childhood educators and childcare providers make a difference in the lives of young children and deserve recognition and support. And public policies that support early care and learning for all young children help Arizona's families, communities, and economy thrive. Now therefore I, Mayor Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 1st through 7th, 2023, as the Week of the Young Child. Would you like to say? And you, oh, if you could speak it.
In this one?
Yes.
Okay. I am Jolene Shield and I am with the Exchange Club, which is a volunteer group here in Flagstaff. And we do the Field of Hope every year, usually the first Friday, but this year it's into the second week. And what we do is put up a flag for each child from birth to 18 who passed away this past year from neglect or abuse. This year, it was quite shocking when we found out that there were going to be not 52, not 67, not 95, but 128 children who died from abuse and neglect through the state of Arizona. That does not take in the reservations. That is just the state properties themselves. And of that 128, 52% were between the age of zero to one. That is more than half, and it was staggering to us. And I was an early childhood teacher. I was a kindergarten, first grade teacher for quite a few years. And it shocks me to hear that in this state that's happening. And the majority of it comes from the drugs that are coming into the state. And that is so sad. We do a lot of other things with the Exchange Club because we support a lot of facilities here in Flag, and it is by volunteer only. None of us are paid. We do it out of love and from our hearts. And so I thank you, Becky, and I thank everyone else, including the council, and especially the council, who realize that our children are our best investment. We are putting up, everyone, keep your fingers crossed, tomorrow we start putting up the Field of Hope, and we pray that we don't have snow and we don't have 70 mile an hour winds, because on those flags, we have volunteers who knit, crochet, or sew items that will go out into the community. And I don't want all our handiwork to be ripped off the flags. And Easter Sunday at noon, we take down our flags. However, Friday afternoon, from 5:15 to 5:45, we have a ceremony honoring and remembering the children who have passed. And everyone is invited, it's at the corner of Cherry in San Francisco on the lawn in front of the old church and council building. So if you want to come, please come see what we do and how we honor these children. You are all invited to come and stand. There aren't seats, but you may come and stand. Thank you. I don't like to fall.
We also have.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I'm Beth Frost, and we're here to represent the Northern Arizona chapter of NACI. We've all, we've been, we're members of NACI, which is who puts on the Week of the Young Child to bring, bring the spotlight to early childcare and early learning, the early child, the parents, the teachers, and the community, and bringing all those people together to make quality childcare. And so we're happy this week to be celebrating the young child and to bring in that attention to, and we thank you, the council and the mayor, for allowing this to happen again this week. We're really excited about it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So moving on to item number seven, we have council liaison reports, and these are the reports that council bring from their commissions that they are the liaison to. So I believe that we have, yes, we do. Councilmember House, are you feeling well enough to share any information?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And so I have two short reports for you from, first, the Commission on Diversity Awareness. We had a very robust discussion that included updates on recommendations for Juneteenth as a city holiday, formalized efforts to establish a women's rights commission, and future proclamation recommendations, as well as continued work for the renaming of the peaks. From the Housing Commission, this past month's meeting primarily focused on discussing recommendations for ARPA and CDBG funding allocations. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you and feel better. Councilmember Sweet?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Transportation will be the subject. The FMPO, Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization, which we affectionately call MetroPlan, will have their executive meeting this Thursday. And then the Transportation Commission will be meeting on Wednesday, tomorrow, and they'll be talking about the Butler and Beaver, and Butler and San Francisco improved intersection plans and the separated bike lanes along Beaver and Butler that some of the people in the public participation talked about tonight. Anyway, that's on the agenda for the Transportation Commission meeting, which will be tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
I attended one meeting that I'll let Vice Mayor Austin Ashland talk about because he's the Chair of it, but it was the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council, and I get so much out of that. I really enjoy participating in that committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I had a couple meetings this past week officially for liaison reports. Sustainability Commission met last Thursday afternoon, I believe. Not much to report out there for you all. And then, yes, as Councilmember Matthews mentioned, the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council met on Friday morning. We had one of our quarterly in-person meetings over there at USGS. And our guest presentation was the Friends of Rida Flag, a presentation about all, you know, all the things that are going on with the Rida Flag culturally, all the recent activity and sensitivities around that. Very briefly got into the flood control project, but it was, it was a much more broad presentation than that. Very much worth checking out. Hope you're able to do so. And not much more to report there. I think that would be of interest to the larger group at this time.
Thank you. So we will move down to appointments. And let me click this. I believe that Councilmember Sweet, you have the first appointment. Is that correct?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank all of the applicants for the library board. It was a very robust list and very difficult to narrow down, and I just love everyone's love for books that applied. It was great to read their stories. With that being said, I move to reappoint Catherine Moore to the library board with a term expiring November 2025.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. And the second appointment is Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo what Councilmember Sweet has stated. We had a really great list of applicants and just reading their passion for the library and, and books and learning and the importance of it, it made it very challenging to select only one of two. And, but through a lot of just thought and deliberation, and I reached out to most of them, and one of them, I ended up having a coughing fit in the middle of the voice message. I apologize once again. But I moved to nominate Lisa Gani to the term expiring November 2023.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Welcome and thank you to all the applicants. My allergies are acting up and my nose is like itching. Okay. Everyone needed to know that, and we are moving down to, no, liquor license, public hearings. Item number 9A, consideration and action on liquor license application. Scott Russell Perry Bromley from Sizzler Number 429, 2105 South Milton Road, Series 12 Restaurant New License. And do we have someone from the police department here?
Good afternoon, Council Mayor.
This is Sterling Solomon, the city attorney. We just need to open the public hearings first.
I thought that came after the presentation. All right. I would like to open the public hearing, and now do we have a presentation?
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. My name is Ryan Turley. I'm a lieutenant with the Flagstaff Police Department. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the application in front of you. The investigations show no derogatory records for the applicant nor the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comment? Public comment?
Not tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. And is the applicant online and does the applicant wish to say anything?
Mayor, I don't believe that they have any comment at this time.
Mayor, they are online, but they do not have any comment at this time.
Great.
Scott, did you have any comment?
All right. So I am going to close the public hearing and I will take a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve, how do we do this? To forward the application to the state with a recommendation for approval for the consideration and action on liquor license application for Scott Russell Perry. license application for Scott Russell Perry Bromley, Sizzler Number 429, located at 2105 South Milton Road, Series 12 Restaurant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So, now we are down to consent items 10A, B, C, D. Does council wish to pull any of these out and consider them separately? All right. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve consent items 10A through D.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Moving down to item number 11, routine items. 11A is consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-06, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff zoning map to rezone approximately 17.08 acres of real property generally located at 2950 East Butler Avenue, from the rural residential and medium density residential zones with a resource protection overlay to the highway commercial zone with a resource protection overlay, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date. Do we have any kind of presentation on this?
Mayor, this is Sterling Solomon again, city attorney. We'll need to open the public hearing before that occurs.
I got it wrong. No, this doesn't have a public hearing.
Correct. There is no public hearing on this item. We closed it last week.
All right. So, I'll take the presentation?
I corrected. Thank you. Sorry.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I don't have a presentation. We did a presentation last time, but I did just want to let you guys know that between then and now, we, we made some minor corrections to the acreage of the rezoned area from 17.02 to 17.08. So, you'll see those corrections reflected in the title and executive summary of the agenda item, and also picked up in the ordinance itself. As well, they, we clarified that the property owner names and applicant names, and got those all straightened out within that ordinance as well, too. So, those were a couple of minor changes that occurred. Just wanted to let you guys know. Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions? Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to read ordinance 2023-06 by title only for the final time.
City clerk, oh, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? City clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff zoning map to rezone approximately 17.08 acres of real property generally located at 2950 East Butler Avenue, from the rural residential RR and medium density residential MR zones to the highway commercial HC zone with conditions, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move to adopt ordinance 2023-06.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That passes, and we move down to our regular agenda. Item number 12A. First item is consideration and adoption of resolution number 2023-16, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the execution of a development agreement between the City of Flagstaff and MICM Butler Lofts Project LP Sierra Vista Number Six LLC and Brookstone Ventures LLC for the lofts on Butler related to the development of approximately 17.2 acres of land located at 2950 East Butler Avenue, and establishing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Patrick St. Clair. I'm here to introduce you to the Lofts on Butler Development Agreement, which is Resolution 2023-16, and application number PZ2100284-04. The Development Agreement is associated with the Direct Ordinance Zoning Map Amendment, ordinance 2023-06, for mixed-use development at 2950 East Butler Avenue, and which just had its second reading just a few moments ago. To quickly orient you to the property covered by the Development Agreement, this map indicates the development site with a red star and red outline, and shows its location in relation to existing development and surrounding uses. The Development Agreement is associated with a mixed-use development comprised of commercial, retail, and multifamily residential uses. The development includes a 5,000-square-foot clubhouse and commercial office building. Will provide an approximately 1.09-acre commercial pad for future commercial development, and includes 172 dwelling units and 43 fourplex residential structures. So, let's look at some of the specifics of the Development Agreement. The primary purpose of this agreement, agreement is to set out roles and responsibilities for the development regarding, but not limited to, administration of the affordable housing units and limits on land use as allowable on the future commercial pad. The Development Agreement indicates costs and payment timing for the in-lu frontage improvements along Butler Avenue, the proportional share cost and payment timing of the Butler Avenue and North Fourth Street intersection permanent signal, identifies cost and payment timings for the solely air transmission main proportional share, and addresses the timing and scope for dedication of the drainage maintenance easements, easement requested by the stormwater division for the on-site portion of a rural flood plain. The Development Agreement also memorializes the approved open and civic space acreages for the project, clarifies amenities for these areas, and clarifies that development will not offer rentals for a period of fewer than 60 days. The project is responsible to provide four electric vehicle charging spaces with intact wiring infrastructure to meet building code minimum standards, but through the Development Agreement, will step above these minimum requirements to provide a single dual-port electric vehicle charging station as well. With this same outlook, the contractor will provide Energy Star rated appliances and HVAC units for the project, and has agreed to build the residential structures to be approximately 19.2% better than the currently adopted 2018 IECC Energy Code, as shown through rescheck documents in the Development Agreement Exhibit G. The DA also records that the project will provide 16 uncovered and 24 covered bicycle parking spaces, 40 in total, which is in excess of the 19 uncovered bicycle parking spaces required by the zoning code. The proposed resolution must be evaluated against and found consistent with three findings indicated in zoning code section 10204006O-C3B. Regarding finding number one, the DA provides community benefits and public good. The Development Agreement is associated with two in approved rezoning for a development project that will infill and underutilized property, commits 5% of the dwelling units as permanent affordable housing units, provides cash-in-lu payments for an off-site public water main and for traffic infrastructure improvements along the Butler Avenue corridor. The DA supports a development that's sustainable, all-electric, provides recycling and waste management, and promotes alternate modes of transportation. The DA contributes to the stability of an active engroving urban neighborhood. The finding is met. Regarding finding number two, the Development Agreement is consistent with the general plan. As noted, the Development Agreement is associated with and in service to an approved rezoning for mixed-use project whose policy analysis indicates the approved development generally conforms to requirements, to the requirements of the general plan. The DA provides structure to manage the development of the project, direct new commercial uses on the future commercial pad, and lays out the total number of residential units in the development. The DA sets out means to complete new city infrastructure affected by the project, and includes connections to multimodal transportation, and enhances the quality of existing neighborhoods. This finding is also met. Regarding, oh, sorry about that. Regarding finding number three, the DA complies with Arizona State Statute ARS 9-500.05. IDS staff reviewed the application, concluded the site was suitable for the development. It's within the city limits and the urban growth boundary. Findings one and two already discussed demonstrate that the DA is compatible with the regional plan. The DA addresses termination and amendment, and is not part of an emergency measure. This finding is also met. City Council has the following options for action. City Council can approve the Development Agreement as presented. City Council can approve the Development Agreement with additional modified or deleted terms. City Council can remand the Development Agreement back to staff for additional negotiations with the applicant, or city staff can deny the Development Agreement. Per zoning code section 10204006OE, Development Agreements are required to provide, to provide a notice of a public hearing for the proposed resolution. Attached to this report are copies of the public hearing notification letter, site posting, and legal ad complying with notification requirements. Staff recommends the City Council, in accordance with the findings presented, approve case PZ2100284-04 as presented with Resolution Number 2023-16, which includes the Development Agreement and the Development Agreement Exhibits. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll ask if there's any questions for staff, and remind council that the applicant may also have a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? And is the applicant here or online? And, and do they wish to? Hello?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Charity Lee with Miramonte Homes, and we do not have a presentation tonight, but I am available for any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for the applicants? Okay. So, can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we read Resolution 2023-16 by title only.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. City clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing a development agreement between MICM Butler Lofts Project LP Sierra Vista Number Six LLC, Brookstone Ventures LLC, and the City of Flagstaff related to the development of approximately 17.2 acres of land located at 2950 East Butler Avenue, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you.
Mayor, before I make a motion to adopt, I just want to point out to the audience, it sounds like we're just going through this and not even paying attention. No, we've read all the staff reports. We've studied this for, for weeks now. So, I think all the council members have done their due diligence. Accordingly, I move that we adopt Resolution 2023-16.
Thank you for making that very important, important point. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. We are down to item number 12B, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-05, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending Flagstaff City Code Title 14 Human Relations. Oh, this is the one we're skipping. Oh, that was, your face. That was great, Stacy.
I was gonna let you finish, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Skipping over item number 12B, as I previously said, it will be scheduled for a future meeting. So, we are moving down to item number 12C, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property for the Cinder Lake Landfill Road Improvement Project, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, authority for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bryce Doty, the real estate manager for the city. Today, I'm here with this agenda item to approve the acquisition of some private property acquisitions related to the Cinder Lake Landfill Improvement. So, let's take a look here. Way up in the east side of town is where we're talking. If anybody has ever been on the landfill road, you know it's a bit of a roller coaster. We've known that for a long time. We've known that, we started design work since 2016 to try to figure out how to make improvements on this. Most of this road is all on a special use permit on the forest. So, this is a forest road that the city maintains. We finally, in 2022, we, we finished up all the environmental assessment with the Forest Service to issue or a decision of no, no, oh, what is it called? No significant impact for the environment. And so, that will likely be issued a 60-foot right-of-way to build our new road in. Because of some of those curves, however, we do need to take some private property in order to make the, to smooth out the grades. So, where these are, are on Curves One and Three of the project. Here's just kind of an overview of the project. So, Highway 81, 89 to the left viewer screen, Curve One is the very first curve that shows up, and then Curve Two, we don't need any private property acquisitions on, and Curve Three is one that we do. And then, it's just Forest Service from there on out until it hits the landfill. Overall, we're talking about 16,000 square feet of private property. So, this is just where the back, back fences or the backyards of all these lots align out. We're just taking 16,000 square feet. Here's Curve One. You can kind of see on the right-hand screen here, you know, that's the extent of the take. And then, Curve Three is the, that's the extent, is that hash line as well. So, that's what we're asking for today. It's going to impact these six different owners. We've been in touch with all of them. We've got some of these in escrow right now. So, we're here today to ask for the authority to formally acquire these properties so that we can deliver the rights needed for the project. And that's my presentation, here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Bryce, did you get any pushback from the owners at all, or were they pretty cooperative?
You know, nobody wants their land taken by the government. I get it. You know, most of it was handled through, you know, agreements to, to create more of a visual buffer. So, some of that, you know, as part of these purchase agreements, we're agreeing to plant additional trees to kind of create that buffer. And so, that's, that's kind of the way that we've handled these, this disturbance. In addition to, to appraising it and paying for the rights.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I'm assuming that in the design, you looked at every possible way to do it without needing to, to go into the backyards of these homeowners, landowners?
We, we did. As part of that environmental assessment that the, the Forest Service did, that was an extent, extensive look at how to best align this road. And ultimately, because of these curves, it just made sense to, to go on this side of the road instead of that side because of the grade.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't see any public comment. So, oh, and will you, never mind. I'm all mixed up today. So, item number C, at today's meeting, we're looking for a motion to read the ordinance for the first time?
So, Mayor, I will move to read ordinance 2023-07 by title only for the first time.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. The All right, the motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I go ahead and read?
Oh, yes, yes.
An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property for the Cinder Lake Landfill Road Improvements Project, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you very much. Moving down to item number, letter D. Consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-08, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff authorizing the acquisition of real property interests for the Schultz Creek Stabilization Project and the Highway 180 Culvert Project, providing for delegation of authority, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date. Oh, hello again.
Oh, hi. Good afternoon, Bryce Doty. This agenda item, instead of being on the east side of town, we're off of Highway 180 in the Schultz Creek Drainage Basin. I think we're all kind of aware of where this is headed. This is an urgent need that we've been identified to tackle. So what we've got are plans, 30% design plans at this stage. And we're coming before you tonight to ask for the property rights that we know we need based off of those designs so that we can stay on top of the, stay on top of this project. So this is the first project that we're talking about. This is the 30% designs of the 180 Culvert. To the right of your screen, that's the Museum of Northern Arizona property. So the new culvert is going to be designed. Oh, to the right of it, there's going to be a sediment basin, then the culvert's going to go over 180, crossing under 180 through the Mount Calvary Lutheran Church parking lot until it terminates into the Rio de Flag. So we've been in talks with Museum and with the Lutheran Church, kind of letting them know what's happening. We've got appraisals ordered. We're trying to stay ahead of the property rights needed for this project so that if, you know, if we get some state-appropriate funds, we can move as quickly as possible. So these three parcels are the parcels that are going to be affected. It's the church, it's the museum, and then a small TC on Ace property. That's what's happening with the culvert. Kind of related to that is a channel stabilization project. And really, this is just to the north of it. So north is to the left of your screen. All these little red lines are channel improvements. So to stabilize the channel, to prevent erosion. All of this is occurring on museum property. And till you get to the second page here, to the right of their screen, that's where 180 is. So this is additional channel stabilization. We have a grant approved for it. This is going to authorize us the property rights to get onto the property so that we can make those improvements in the creek. Part of the reason why we're asking for authority to acquire these properties is the museum property is burdened by a conservation easement, which has some pretty strict language about what you can and cannot do. The intent of when they received this land was to receive it and maintain it in its natural state. We want to come in and do these flood control projects to stabilize the channel, to prevent flooding. So we're asking you for the authority to acquire this with condemnation language, if we need to do that because the current, the restrictions on the property would prevent us from doing it voluntarily. So that's why we're bringing this project in as well. And that's the rest of my presentation for this one. Happy to address any questions.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Bryce, can you go back to the screen that shows... Right there. So I'm trying to read in small print with my contacts. Is the water flow now going to be redirected on the north side of Creekside Drive?
I don't know if we're actually planning any redirecting any, but I'm going to see if Ed can come up here and address any design questions related to this.
And I ask this because I was out during the flooding last year, and a property owner up Creekside Drive had built his own diversion because the creek was coming right towards him, and then he diverted it to a 90-degree angle around his house. But this looks like now it'd be on the other side, so...
Great question, council member. Ed Schenk, stormwater manager. So with this project, this is NRCS EWP funding, so Emergency Watershed Protection Project funding, we're not intending to move any water or flow lines. So we're not intending to change the channel other than to stabilize it. So there is quite a bit of scour, incision going on right now, even as we speak. So the purpose of this is to do similar to what the county has done, the County Flood Control District on the east side during the Schultz fire, then also during the museum fire, by putting in what they call J-hook veins, cross vein weirs, rock sill dams. So these are all rock structures that are intended to keep the channel in place and reduce sediment and debris movement into the neighborhoods. But no, we are not intending to change the flow patterns or provide any detention for this particular project.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions? Comments? All right, then, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve the adoption of ordinance number 2023-08 and read it by title only for the first time.
So we're just reading it? So if... So you move to...
So I move to read ordinance number 2023-08 by title only for the first time.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, it carries.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff authorizing the acquisition of real property interests for the Schultz Creek Stabilization Project and the Highway 180 Culvert Project, providing for delegation of authority, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. All right, down to item number E, letter E. Consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-09, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff dedicating a public access easement across city-owned property located at 3500 Northwest Street, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bryce Doty, real estate manager. I think we're all very familiar with the flooding effects on Grandview. So right here is where we're at, we're just north of the Cedar Safeway in town. This, actually, this parcel, APN 109-02-001P, this is a city-owned parcel. There's a lot of history on this of attempts to develop this for affordable housing. I don't think any of that is necessarily dead at this point, but, you know, all, kind of the most recent efforts have finally kind of wrapped up and we're probably going to have to think of a new way to activate this parcel. But as you can see, on the, just north of this parcel with the star there is Grandview. Really, a lot of the, you know, impacts of this flooding along Grandview has really prevented, created a lot of parking issues. And it's really preventing a lot of these neighbors and residents from finding solutions and that they want to implement. And so we've been working with some of them in the community here, the three neighbors just to the north of our parcel, to find a way that, to create an alternative access to their houses for the purpose of, to allow them to help build some flood mitigation on the Grandview side. So what this would look like is granting our parcel 60,000 square feet, granting, dedicating a public easement of approximately 1,988 square feet. This is just my, you know, fun little drawing here, but that's kind of the visualization of what we're looking at in the context of our parcel. And what this is really going to do is going to allow them to connect to, connect to their parcels and either build garages there for access to their parcels. This is a public dedication of a public easement that it will become, in effect, provided that these owners will build and maintain these improvements. So the city is not going to incur any cost to do this, but we are giving them the opportunity to build and improve that public easement. This is the street view of where we're looking at. This is kind of the concept plan of what that would look like. And yeah, that's really the nature of this, trying to find a solution with the city-owned property to mitigate some of these effects that these residents are experiencing. So available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a comment, Bryce. The only picture missing was a picture of the front of those houses that are impacted. I was there about two weeks ago just checking out to see if we had flooding, and it's pretty challenging for them. I think they all have four-foot sandbag walls. So giving them access, I think, is a really great alternative to what they have to deal with right now and helping them just get their lives back to some sort of normalcy. So thank you for coming up with a solution, and I'm happy to see this on the agenda today.
Any questions from council? Okay, we do have public comment, and then city manager would like to make a comment after public comment. So we have Anissa Doten? Hello?
Hello. Okay, yeah, no problem. Hi, Mayor, hi, council. I haven't seen a lot of you for a long time, and some of you are new faces for me. But the house on the picture is actually where me and my five children used to live. We have since vacated the property of the six houses that are most adversely affected when the water first reaches the channel. Four of those families have left. Some of them left immediately, some of them have sold their houses at a loss just to be able to move on. My kids and I are in a position where we can't do that. So we're playing the long game here, and hopefully the easement will give us a way to safely access the property, which we can't do right now, we don't live there. And it's not four-foot sandbags, it's five-to-six-foot sandbags. And as high as they are, they're that wide as well. And those wrap around the entire corner of our property, which means we can't get in or out at this point. So the house currently sits vacant, and we live in housing that was generously provided by friends and community members for the kids and I, where we've been about eight months at this point. Prior to that, we moved in and out of the house three times over the course of eight months. So this gives us the opportunity to make the house a home again and to have safe, you know, access that will be year-round for us. So I know it's a big deal, not only for us, but also for our neighbors downstream for us, so to speak. That corner is just the cornerstone for flooding, and that is where the water first hits with all of its force. And so if we are given the opportunity to protect that corner, it in turn protects our neighbors downstream from us. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, council, for this presentation and the questions and the discussion that's going to follow. While this is a public easement, and I know the comment was made by staff that this would be all built at private expense, I would like to keep open the opportunity for possible city contributions in an in-kind basis, not a financial one per se, but if there are opportunities for us to help out in the construction of this internally, I'd like to at least have that option considered, not mandated, but on the table for consideration insofar as it is a public easement. I want to echo the comments just made by our presenter and share with you that the other two property owners, one of whom has moved from the neighborhood, but the house will be reoccupied. But there's a very collaborative or collective desire to see this easement go into place that will help three properties that are arguably the most affected, negatively impacted properties from the Spruce flooding events that have occurred and frankly, will likely continue to occur at some level in the future. And that leads to my final comment. The engineers, the hydrologists, the planners have all repeatedly noted that even with all the mitigation efforts underway, and they are significant, $26 million approved by Proposition 441 this year to go into these improvements over the next few years, but they will not eliminate the risk. They will mitigate it, but they won't take it away. So flooding for the residents of Grandview remains now and into the future a way of life in minimizing those risks and figuring out ways to adapt and be resilient to these flood events. That's the narrative we're having tonight. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, city manager. And will, and thank you for raising that as a possibility, the in-kind help. Will that need to come back to us? Or is our nodding of our heads...
Thank you, Mayor, I think both. I think the nodding of the heads is greatly appreciated, and we will keep you apprised.
Okay, thank you. I, for one, am very much in support of helping in every way that we can. That corner has just been, I mean, I don't need to tell you, but for the public who might not be aware, that entire neighborhood, but especially that corner, has been so hard-hit with the flooding. And I'm delighted that there is some kind of mitigation that we can do to, so that our neighbors can live in their homes again. Councilmember Harris.
I'm not sure if I can ask this question, so I'll ask it, and then you all can tell me I can't ask it. The people that are in that area, are they required or do they have to buy flood insurance? Or have they bought flood insurance? Are they in what we call a flood plain or floodway? Or they're just, it's just flooding, period? Not in any, no?
I'll speak to the insurance part and invite Ed Schenk or anybody from Water Services to comment on the flood plain question. Insurance, we cannot require that. The municipality, we encourage it, we send notices out. And that has been, you know, a prevalent messaging of the last couple of years. My strong suspicion is many people do have insurance, but not all. And so, and that, I think, is generally the reality in these events. Not everybody can afford flood insurance. But I'll turn to my colleague Ed Schenk to give his best response on the flood plain question. Thank you.
Thank you, and apologize for not being on top of this one. I've been talking with staff on another matter with grants. So where in particular are we talking about here?
The question is, how much of this area, Grandview, we're speaking of, lies within the flood plain and perhaps even the floodway? Thanks.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So a good portion of Grandview is in the FEMA flood plain, so flood plain AE. That was designated in 2010, well, most recently in 2010. So that is unrelated to the fire, the museum fire, but it was already in a flood plain AE. We're happy to look at that. We have a flood zone determination group within Stormwater to take a look at what that base flood elevation would be for particular properties and developments, both at the pre-con level as well as all the way through development, for new development as well as for existing homes. So we can take a look at that. There's also administrative flood plain over this area. So administrative flood plain is at the city level. It does not require insurance. It's just a flood plain to provide more information based on what we provide you at council in terms of what we expect to see for flood elevations in the interim condition. So that would be the condition right now as we develop projects for Spruce Wash, really to help homeowners and developers understand the current flood risk, but that is completely separate from that FEMA flood plane. And then, as the city manager mentioned, at the city level, we do not require flood insurance. That is a FEMA requirement for anybody who has a mortgage. So that is under the National Flood Insurance Policy for areas that are a special flood hazard area, which would be your flood plain AE or floodway AE.
No question. So then, does that mean... No question. So then, does that mean that the property owners are limited in terms of what they can do to their property, in terms of improving it or anything like that? Or if somebody comes in and wants to do something else, are they are there some stipulations, correct?
There are stipulations to new development or to tenant improvements in areas that are within a floodway or floodplain. That is correct. The 50% rule is what is usually referred to by FEMA for properties, especially that are in the floodway. Really, the the hope is to to get people out of floodways and out of floodplanes, whether that's by raising the building or providing floodproofing, or developing in a way that gets it out of that floodplain. So yeah, with any of those questions, we're happy, our staff is happy to to take those. There's a lot of administrative details to us. Each one's a little bit separate. But, you know, we have a staff that's that's happy to help work through those.
All right. If there are no more comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to, where is it? Read ordinance number, am I in the right one? Yes. 2023-09 by title only for the first time.
Second.
It's motioned and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. So down to?
Mayor.
Oh, yeah. Would you read it, please?
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff dedicating a public access easement across city-owned property located at 3050 Northwest Street, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, item F, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-10, an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property interests for the Milton Road and University Avenue right-of-way project, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bryce Doty, real estate manager. I've been before council on this authorizing acquisitions in 2021. I've been here author asking for authority to acquire in 2022. And now I am here asking again in 2023. What's changed is we've had to modify a few legals that we've, and I'll go through it on the map. But as of yesterday, this project started. So we've got construction crews on the ground. And so we are asking for a first and second read tonight so that we have the authority to acquire these and keep in front of the construction timeline. And so that's what's happening. That's why we're asking for a first and second read tonight is to speed up the the ability to to acquire these. Here's where we're at, just University and and Milton. And here's our our project map. So some of these are modifications that reduce the actual limits of what we need. So here's BU10. This was initially designed to to acquire the existing or the the width of the right-of-way that we're expanding for the roundabout. Well, we don't really need that for this scope of the project. So we don't really want to pay for that right now. So what we've done is modify our legal, reducing it from 11,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet. Based off of our appraisals and our updated appraisals, we expect this to save us about $300,000. So we're trying to find ways to both limit the scope of the project and limit the property acquisitions on it. And so that's one of them. And similar situation. On the, uh oh, dare I push that X? I don't know.
That was quick.
Yeah. Hey, okay. And a little bit of right-of-way reduction on this, the Woodlands Village parcel BU22. And then the main new additions to this was some underground infrastructure easements necessary for the pedestrian underpass. So those are going to affect the Burger King. And that's this BU46B. That was a new legal that we needed. And then it's going to also affect the Target with an underground infrastructure easement, which is in the call out, which I'll try to get to on the next page. Yeah, this BU78. So those were really the majority of the the new takes and the reductions of right-of-way. We're out, again, we're out there as of yesterday, clear and grub on the rights that we do control on the city properties that were acquired through the initial development agreement. And we just kind of need to clean up the remaining revised legal descriptions and get those the authority so that we can we can have site control on the rest of the project. And that's that's all I've got. Available for you. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Bryce, you said it will impact Burger King and Target. Can you just expand on that a little bit? Like, how are we taking property away from them permanently or just to do construction?
So let me go back to this. So what we're asking for, that's a new easement, is a we're calling it an underground infrastructure easement. So basically, we need these huge pins to pin into the ground to stabilize the pedestrian underground pass. And so we didn't initially capture that in our, you know, the last two towns we came. We didn't have a legal description for what those rights would entail. But it is going to be underground. It is, there is a value to that, but it's not a permanent taking that's going to take the the entire fee. It's just going to be an easement burdening their property.
Additional questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
So I just want to give due diligence to acknowledging the unusual aspect of this in terms of first read and second read on the same evening. I'm very much okay with this. I understand the contextual landscape of what we're dealing with and the timeline we're working with. And right now, more than ever before, possibly, time is money. So it's prudent for us to have this conversation. And also, I just want to say ultimately that I think if we were looking at a conversation of right-of-way expansions as opposed to right-of-way reductions, I'd be much more reluctant to to push this through in an unorthodox manner. But we're actually, I may be wrong about this, and you can correct me if you want to. We're actually giving land back to property owners. We're relinquishing right-of-way, and we're saving a bunch of money by doing it. So that's just a completely different context than increasing an acquisition. So I'm okay with it.
You've been very busy.
I don't want to do this again. I can't keep them all straight in my head. I'm going to space them out next time.
Okay, so we are going to, if council approves, do, we're going to read the ordinance twice and adopt tonight. And the reading the ordinance for the final time requires a unanimous vote, as does adopting it. So do I have a motion to read it for the first time?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sterling's too late.
What?
It looks like Sterling's got his hand up.
Yes, Sterling?
Thank you. I hope I'm not too late, Mayor and council. I just wanted to mention, Mayor, this second read will need to be unanimous as well in order for that final adoption to be able to occur. You still need a motion second for the second read, not just a unanimous vote on the adoption, though, but a unanimous vote on the second read. Both.
Okay, thank you. City clerk?
An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property interests for the Milton Road and University Avenue right-of-way project, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to read for the final time?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we read ordinance number 2023-10 by title only for the final time.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, city clerk?
An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property interests for the Milton Road and University Avenue right-of-way project, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effectiveness.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt.
Thank you.
Ordinance, do I have to say it all? Ordinance number 2023-10.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to item 13, future agenda item requests. This is a citizen's petition titled Declare Macy's Coffee House as a Historic Landmark. And did staff, I'm going to click here. Yeah. Did staff want to comment on the staff memo?
I believe we've got Mr. Rivas coming to provide some comment here.
Mark Rivas, Heritage Preservation Officer, Neighborhood Planner. I think the memo is pretty self-explanatory. The applicant is here, and he he wants to express his concerns about Macy's and how in its place within the community. And I can further explain where its current historic status is and what its future historic status can be. So I will turn it over to the applicant.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, council. Thanks for, my petition allowing me to speak today. My name is Brendan Traxel. I am currently a senior at NAU. I'm also student body president, but I'm not here for that. I'm just here as me. So I've been pursuing a lot of projects about creating further understanding and recognition of history, particularly NAU, pursuing a historical plaque project on that campus. And I began looking outside of the campus and found that Macy's has some extremely unique historical qualities, specific to not just Flagstaff, but also Arizona as a whole. And so I began investigating that. I did write an article in NAU's student newspaper, The Lumberjack, that I did include in the petition and was received by city clerk. And I'll just mention some of the things that I found. So Macy's began in Flagstaff in 1980 and instantly began serving espresso drinks. It was fly, or it was the entire Arizona State's very first coffee house that roasted its own beans, which is extremely unique, considering coffee culture wasn't necessarily existent back then. It actually served espresso four years before Starbucks did. So I consider it in coffee culture to be extremely ahead of the curve. But where it really stands out to me is its staple, it being a staple in the community, not just to individual citizens in Flagstaff. I know for a fact Macy's has made me create a home in Flagstaff, having been able to meet people there and play a lot of chess there and doing a lot more. But one thing that has been particularly significant to me, and I'm sure a lot of others, is its significance to the local Bahai community as a gathering space. Their monthly meetings and topics of discussion are open to the public. And I've actually attended a couple of them during my time at NAU and have been deeply inspired by their entire group's kindness and welcomeness. And I think that has given it a certain status that deserves recognition, at the very least. And Mark has sent me the memo, which I'm very appreciative of. And if that is accepted by the state or national registers, I would love to pursue informal recognition in the form of interpretive materials provided by the city. And if that doesn't doesn't go through, I would love to pursue local recognition, because it's also shared with me in my meetings with the Historical Preservation Committee or Commission, that the city of Flagstaff has never actually put a property independently on the Flagstaff register and is only fulfilled by state and federal. So I think Macy's is a great candidate for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, questions for staff or the applicant or the applicant? Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, it turns out I'm a bad person. I haven't read that memo. So philosophically, I like this idea. But before I could approve it, I'd be concerned about what the legal implications are. And maybe that's covered in the memo. And it is covered in the memo?
No, excuse me, Councilmember McCarthy. It is pretty short and sweet, per, the memo is.
You summarize it?
Yes. So the request was for declaring Macy's a historic landmark, which would be a national register listing. That is currently not the way, I'll give the short course, on historic preservation. So individual listing is very difficult. District listing is easier. And this property is unique because currently, the South Side neighborhood, its period of significance is 1947. We have looked at that area. We've looked at the ethnic history. And the new potential period of significance is 1962. And that building would be within, and the evaluation was that it would be a contributing property. Again, that's not the listing for Macy's. That's the listing for the property itself and the architecture that's there. When it does become a contributing property, if it goes through the sites committee, then that would provide some level of local protection. It could be a local listing. And that information about Macy's being in 1980 and a long established, you know, would be part of the history. But that's not how it would be listed. So it would provide a level of protection. It has been evaluated as contributing. So any impacts, you know, potentially with the real, that would be a consideration when we're working on that project as well.
So in summary, this is more complicated than it looks at first glance. I guess if if this were granted, that would prevent certain things being done to that building. Is that correct?
No, not, excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy. You know, we simply have, property rights are always there. We just have a process when we go through demolitions. So, you know, often will require, if it's a significant property contributing to a district, will require a cultural resource study. So if a property owner wants to tear it down, property owner can tear down the property. But it does require that additional review. So the concern about keeping that building standing with the potential for the new period of significance, when I submit it to the sites committee, does establish that where I would review it and the Historic Preservation Commission would review it. I'd be more than happy to help the applicant out with interpretive material. I think that's one of the main things that he would like to have done, acknowledge what that place is to the community. So I would certainly do that. And we could, you know, work toward a goal and maybe find some funding source to do that.
Another question is, I assume, I'm not really sure, but I assume that Mr. Macy does not own that building. He's probably just renting it. So if that's true- So if that's true, then what about the people that own that building? What do they think about this?
I don't know that, but I do have the name. It's a group that owns the building, so, but they do consider it as a historic property, and apparently they do want to take care of it, so.
City Manager, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council, and thank you for the discussion to everybody. I do, I heard, what I've heard now for the second time, is that there could be some, albeit minor, but some implications with this property and the Rio project, that's the Rio de Flag Storm or Flood Control Project. I think it would behoove us to explore what that implication is thoroughly. That would be my suggestion, at any rate, before taking action on this, just to make sure that we're not creating issues down the road.
Councilmember McCarthy, and then you had a question. Okay.
So, if we decided to move this forward tonight, then that would give you time to do that kind of investigation, to answer the questions I have, to look into the impacts, read the Rio de Flag. So if we move it forward, that isn't like approving it, that's just saying, hey, let's look into this a little more, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so. I think a lot of additional information is warranted in this case, and specifically going to the comments by staff, and thank you staff for that, you know, what, exactly what does a contributing property mean for the city moving forward? I do not want to cast any sort of negative shadow upon this petition and what it's asking for. I'm simply suggesting that we be very careful moving forward, and do all the exploratory work that is warranted here. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just for my educational benefit. Is declaring a property or a business a historic landmark, is that typically gone through council, or is that something that just goes through our Historic Preservation Division?
Mayor, Councilmember, it actually is an action that we do, it's our obligation as a certified local government to look at potential historic resources, and to continuously evaluate those. And again, listing in the national register is simply an honor roll. When it gets listed in the national register, so, when I did mention the Rio de Flag, I was aware that there's work that possibly can be done there. Contributing properties or potentially eligible properties have to be considered. So this larger, bigger picture of potentially impacting resources is always something that federal undertakings do. And again, I'm involved in that extensively, as far as evaluating historic resources. So again, that doesn't mean you stop projects at all, it means that you just consider it and see what the alternatives are.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to support moving this forward, just because I think it is a very interesting conversation and a worthy topic. I would want to make sure we had the time to explore those important considerations that City Manager brought up. I would also think we could use that time to maybe explore some alternative ways of honoring, recognizing, and protecting Macy's as a business and as a building, that maybe don't require, that aren't so prescriptive in terms of historic preservation designation through other, you know, channels and protocols. I love what you mentioned about helping to provide interpretive materials for the coffee house, so something like that. And then maybe a non-binding resolution, recognizing the historical importance and significance of the coffee house, and maybe some conversations about its importance to the Southside community as well, which I don't even really think has been tapped into yet in this conversation. So, yeah, I think I'd like to see this go forward. I thank the applicant and those who have signed the petition for bringing this up. It's a great conversation. You know, I do worry that it's not old enough for historic preservation, and that there are other worthy buildings and locales in town that have been in line already for years, and are still waiting for their chance to get those kinds of protections and designations. But Macy's in particular, even for the reasons that were noted during the presentation by the applicant, which are facts that I did not know about Macy's, are really fascinating and something to be proud of, and something for our community to lift up and recognize. So whatever the end game on this looks like, I hope it would have a little bit of teeth for protection, but at the very least, to honor the spirit of the application, I think we should move forward with some attempt to recognize and honor and cherish such an important historic building in the making.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. So I very much agree with what the Vice Mayor just voiced. I find this concept very interesting, and I just wanted to draw council's attention to, it's a February 2010 story, I believe, from NPR's All Things Considered, that also drew attention to Macy's as Arizona's original coffee house. So it's definitely gotten its fair share of attention in recent years. I also had questions about its eligibility for the National Historic Register. I just took a little bit of time over the weekend to look at some of those requirements, and those seem to suggest maybe a 50-year time period that this may fall just shy of. However, I don't think that is a complete disqualifier, I think it's just something to look further into. I agree with the City Manager on examining the implications, particularly to the Rio project, but I want to emphasize that I understand the interest in this, and I want to, again, thank those who brought it up, and, again, voice my agreement with the Vice Mayor in that this is definitely calling to mind, at the very least, a deeper dive into some of the other historic properties and structures in our community that might also be awaiting similar recognition. So I am in favor of moving this forward, at least to continue the conversation, and look forward to hearing the rest of council's discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Any additional questions or comments? So I'm hearing two in support of further exploration. I'll add my voice, it looks like all of us. And Brendan, thank you very much for bringing this information forward. I too didn't know any of this, about Macy's being the first coffee house in Arizona. And I just, I appreciate that you started this conversation. I'm sorry, oh, we have an online comment.
Mayor, this is for the next item.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving down to 14, public participation. Do, I don't have any cards, so we just have the online commenter?
Yes, our commenter tonight is Anthony Garcia. Anthony, you may go ahead and counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Aslan, Honorable Council, Management, and Staff. I am Anthony Garcia, 2212 North Center Street, Sunnyside, Flagstaff, Arizona. As promised, I am back to build upon my narrative and comments from last week regarding the future community investment opportunity potential of Fire Station Number Two, and the Sunnyside Neighborhood's vision for what we are loosely calling Joe Montalvo's STEM Research Center, and the numerous possibilities that surround this innovation. Last week, I mentioned a previous mayor and councilperson, while still in office at that time, and acting on their own volition as citizens, realized that there was a need within our community for a hands-on, one-stop STEM research facility that catered to K-12 experimental learning and innovative educational opportunities. Once that community need was identified, the next steps were to find a space to facilitate such an institution. After scouring the town for available potential sites, they settled on a vacant city-owned space that seemed to check all the boxes, and that's where we're at with Old Fire Station Number Two, and that's where it comes into play. After they collaborated with staff, it became quite evident that with all the costly improvements needed to transform the old fire station appropriately, that it would be more cost-prohibitive to remodel the existing facility, and the community would get more bang for their buck if it was just demoed and rebuilt from the ground up. But then, guess what happened? COVID-19 hit, and our economy, as you all know, suffered. So, this idea understandably was carefully placed upon a shelf to be revisited at a more appropriate time. I would like to, again, thank staff, and especially City Manager Greg Clifton, for bringing this project back to our neighborhood's attention, at a time where the stars are seemingly in alignment, and there is a funding resource that seems to fit hand in glove. The Sunnyside feels like, like this, like the time is right now for this neighborhood investment. With 2.4 million in unencumbered ARPA funding currently available, the puzzle pieces are ready to be assembled. We would like to thank you, Mayor Daggett, and City Council members, for considering this community investment during your upcoming, excuse me, upcoming budget retreat. Please, let us help our youth have the tools to rocket themselves to the stars, and help our neighborhood grow with the times. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Anthony. Any other comments for public participation? Seeing none? All right, moving down to item number 15, informational items to from Mayor, Council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. I will start with Vice Mayor.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
I would just like to invite everyone to Miss Cleo's Tea Party, April 30th.
And what time is that?
It's two to four, and it's the event you don't want to miss.
It is a lot of fun. And people need to RSVP, correct? Have to buy tickets? On Eventbrite? All right, at the Murdoch Center. Great, thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, myself and, I think, almost all of you went to the Viola Awards, they were a lot of fun, and this was the first time I had gone, so I had a good time. I also participated in the regional planning activities for community input and played the game. It was very informative, and at first I thought it would be impossible, but we all had a good time. And they'll have, they're hosting a regional plan map at A New Living next week, and let the residents there participate. Also, during the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Meeting, as well as the regional plan, they kept talking about Pitcher Canyon, and so I felt inspired, as soon as that meeting was over, to go take a hike in Pitcher Canyon, and it was beautiful, and dry, and not muddy, and I encourage everyone to go and enjoy that wonderful resource.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things tonight. April is National Poetry Month, which is a month-long celebration of poetry and poets. And as a poet, I would love the community to join in that celebration by reading and sharing, and just enjoying the poetic arts in whatever ways that they can. It is also Arab-American Heritage Month, which is a celebration of Arab-American heritage and culture, that pays tribute to the contributions of those who identify as Arab-American and Arabic-speaking Americans. It is also Celebrate Diversity Month, which is a celebration of the diversity surrounding us, and an opportunity to gain deeper understandings of each other and community. I also was able to attend the Viola Awards, which was a celebration of the arts in Flagstaff, and it was an absolutely beautiful evening of celebration and enlightening education. And I just want to acknowledge that several of the remarks that were made that evening were reminders of opportunities that we have as a community, to continue to embrace and diversify our definitions of the arts, and what we recognize as artistic representation in our community. It's an opportunity for us to recognize the various contributions from Flagstaff's diverse cultural communities, and to continue our efforts to create and celebrate beautiful and beloved community for all who call Flagstaff home. And finally, April is also Fair Housing Month, which is very important for Flagstaff, particularly as we continue to face the challenges of affordable and attainable housing. And I just want to remind the community that we will be hosting a Flagstaff Landlord/tenant and Fair Housing Training here at City Hall on Wednesday, April 12, at 8:30 a.m. And the community is, of course, invited to that, and to learn all that there is to know about Arizona's Residential Landlord/tenant Act, their rights as residents and renters in our community, not only as tenants, but also for landlords and homeowners and so forth, all who are impacted by this important topic. So I hope to see some folks there. And that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sweet? Nothing for me, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. Today, I was fortunate to judge, as part of the Flagstaff Youth Climate Summit, which is a partnership between our Sustainability Division and Willow Bend Environmental Education Center, and it was so much fun, and the projects that students are proposing to do are really inspiring, and there is enough money to fund all of the projects, so that's also exciting. And last week, we had an alternate response team meeting where we, this is where the care team came out of, and this alternate response team has been meeting for years, but this was an update on the RARE Assessment, where a group of volunteers went out and spoke with and interviewed unsheltered individuals in our community, and brought that information back to the, to the larger group. And I'm hoping that we can have them come and present to us at some point, because I think the public and the council would be interested in the information that was presented. And that's all I have. City Manager?
Nothing for me, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, so, we're adjourned.